Good morning, everyone. If you cannot hear me, let me know. Beautiful sunny day today. And welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, December 1st of 2020. So we're in the last month of 2020. Joining us today is Teresa from the radio station, Katie or KMAQ. Kelly from the newspapers with us. I don't see anyone else on there. Don't be afraid to jump in there if you need it. Also with us today is Luanne Yetke, our executive assistant. Lisa, our county auditor. Larry McDevitt, Zach Willie, and myself, Mike Steinis, are your county supervisors. First on the agenda today is Mike Clausen, our Jackson County Assistant Engineer. Good morning, Mike.
Just had a couple of updates against involved today. They were working on the slide over there. 15 North Springbrook. We have to rip wrap in. We had the dirt all in there and then it rained and settled the dirt again. So we're going to go back and do a little more work on the dirt portion there.
Where's that exactly at?
It's my buddy's property there down where the.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's a triple box culvert.
Okay.
So we got that fixed up. And I talked to Dan Schrader last week and he thought possibly next week. He'd be working on that.
Silverdine Ridge?
Silverdine Ridge.
So we have to notify the school? That's it? Route goes up through there?
Yeah, we'll have to. He wasn't, he wasn't sure just what he was going to do.
Okay.
He was just speculating.
But he's also speculating he will have to have the road closed, not one lane or?
Yeah, you get an equipment set.
Yeah, I get it.
There's no shoulders there, so you can't get over.
Yeah, the road's too narrow to have a big piece of equipment there.
Yeah.
And how long did they anticipate it was?
Dan was talking about a week.
Yeah.
And I think he's hoping for less than that. It probably will be less than that, but we'll plan on a week.
Sure.
And then, so and then Todd was going to give some updates on what Alex was up to. He didn't show up yet.
Well, send him over when he gets back.
I kind of know what Alex is working on the daylighter bridges we want to do this next summer. Getting those sized and that. And then he was out and looked at the new ones. So we knew bridges, all five, five of the bridges we did this year and, and got the, the SIA forums, the structural inventory forums done. And get those, get those turned in, in that. And then he was going to work on a couple of the, the bridges that are on our five-year road plan, like the 49th Street Bridge. And possibly the one on C-15. The pavement that we're going to replace in a couple of years. That's what you've been working on.
Okay, yeah, we were supposed to have a joint meeting and Clayton, Clayton Art from Buchanan County was supposed to set that up. So I don't know that we ever did that yet. If we can get a timeframe that you can join, of course, and, and maybe Todd, because he's been here for six months. And maybe it's good enough to wait until the new engineer is in place too. I don't know. But just trying to get a report how it's working for everyone, everyone.
And kind of fairly explain to the new engineer what exactly all Alex does.
Or he can, or you can, or he can. So.
What he's able to do.
Okay, any questions for Mike? I see the grass is even coming in up on the milk creek one. Yeah. So looks good. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
I'm getting slight feedback from me with Jack, I think.
Mine is on.
Is it?
Mine is, and I turned it down and no sound as far down as it'll go.
That's all we can do. All right.
You could do a headphone thing like that, yeah.
I don't think it's, it's not. All right, are there any other visitors or anyone who would like to comment? Criticize anything else at this time? If not, we will move on. Is Becky available? Oh, okay. And I don't, what do I do with them numbers? Sure, Lisa.
This morning, I need a motion to approve the November 24th, 2020 board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith to authorize publication in the official newspapers.
So move. Have a motion and a second to approve the November 24th, 2020 board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried.
This morning, I also handed out resolution number 778-12-01 to County. And this is a request from County Treasurer Beth Gerlock where she would like some taxes evaded on a mobile home. $194 in the Valley View Trailer Park in Bellevue because it has been moved to a trailer park to a property. Well, we assess there as the property. So this morning, I would like to have a motion as needed to approve resolution number 778-12-01-2020. To abate the taxes according to section 435.25 of the Code of Iowa as recorded in resolution book four as presented.
So move.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 778-12-01-2020 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Just add that it's $194.
And it's just going from one place to the other. Still getting it, so.
They moved it out of the park and into a taxable piece of property. And that's all that I have for the motion.
All right, thank you, Lisa.
I don't know if we actually ended up voting, but I'll say aye.
Aye.
But again, aye. Oh, yeah, we have further conversation? All those opposed? This.
High sex meeting yesterday and. But instead of asking for all votes, or he would say, is anybody opposed? So that way everybody didn't have to unmute and stuff and say aye.
And that's what I've been doing on the meetings that I chair. I'll say, if anybody, if there is no opposition, the motion will pass as presented. And then nobody says, hey, wait a minute.
Yeah.
It just makes it easier once everything's.
You know, it's hard for them to get them muted and say aye.
Well, when you've got that large group like that, yeah, that's, it makes sense.
And usually you hear about two ayes and then nobody says anything.
It's kind of delayed on some. Luanne, do you have a lot on your agenda?
Nope.
Okay, we'll actually take you then. Good morning.
Good morning. All I have today is the calendar and it's pretty thin.
Like ten calendars. Everybody's eating leftovers now instead of turkey.
That's right. All right, tomorrow, Wednesday, December 2nd at 9:00 a.m. is an RTA board meeting by Zoom for all of you. And at 11 o'clock is the annual all county tag meeting by Zoom. That's also for everybody. So end of meeting. Thursday, December 3rd at 9:00 a.m. is the meeting with Bellevue City Council on the Bellevue Urban Renewal Plan Amendment. It's for all of you. On Saturday, December 5th at 8:00 a.m. is the civil service exam up at the high school. And it doesn't really involve any of you, so that's strictly informational.
Do we know how many or who, how many we have signed up for that?
Nine.
Really?
Yes.
Well, that's good turnout.
And our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, December 8th at 9:00 a.m. That morning at 11 o'clock, Jack has a conference board ad hoc committee meeting. And for that afternoon, Larry has a Hookah River Watershed Management Authority executive meeting by Zoom. And all the business I have.
Since you're doing calendar, we had to cancel our appointment for this Friday to go up to Manchester. I did talk to Brent last night and he was kind of disappointed. But he was wondering if we could do it a week from Friday at noon or between 12 and 12:30 and then.
Yeah, well, what I know about it is that Larry has seven judicial that morning, starting at 10:00. So he probably won't be done until noon or there about, and then it takes his two hours from Davenport to Manchester. So the earliest he could get there would be about 2:00.
Okay.
Unless.
There's nothing else on.
Your seventh judicial, do you, is that Zoom? No, that's in person.
Well, it's not, last time a couple zoomed in, but.
So you, you have the option of zooming in?
Well, he's chair though, aren't you?
Yeah, in the chair. We're normally, well, I'm not going to say we're normally.
Yeah.
A lot of times it's 11:30 before we're done with the meeting.
So this Friday, they're working on the forest, so we can't physically walk through it. Is that correct?
Well, last week when I talked to Jeff, he called, he said, well, let me check with the contractor. Because they're sealing the forest this week. And he called me back and said, the guy that's doing the ceiling said, Friday will be fine. We'll be done by Friday. Well, of course, they called yesterday and said that the guy contractor said, it's not going to work for Friday. We're not going to be finished. So we need to do it sometime next week. And so, well, I'll just talk to Brent and see if there's another day next week that would work. Because Friday apparently isn't. And I'll see what he says.
Unless we do it at two, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, he seems to be, and whoever he's bringing with him.
Thursday's not really a good day.
He says it to you guys.
Well, do we just want to do it Friday at 2:00?
It's fine with me.
Okay.
So far. I mean, if it's a case where.
Well, I know.
One of us or two of us can't be there.
I know that he's bringing somebody from the Scott County jail with him. Because he said he will know more questions to ask than Brent would know about how things.
And if it's similar in our layout or what we make, you know.
Well, it certainly looked like it from the floor plan, that it was quite similar to what we're doing.
Well, and the thing is, we can always tweak the floor plan. Yes, we want to make sure that we're just, we like to look to the facility and duck it up. We're not reconstructing the floor plan at this time when we go over.
Well, I'll tell him next, next Friday and we'll plan to be in Manchester at 2:00.
Okay. I got that on the calendar. The 11th.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I see that Becky is here. Would you like to join us?
Of course. She's just dying to.
Thank you. Robbie, thank you, Neil.
Interesting information, the good numbers on the backside of it. So we're here today because my understanding that the cemetery commission had approached the board about possibly increasing funding for indigent burials that are placed at the county home. Through general assistance, that is one of the programs that I found through my office. And I guess I just wanted to come talk to you guys a little bit about what, I just want to talk about a little bit more. I'm not sure exactly what the question is. I'm not sure if you're wanting to revisit the actual general assistance policy for every burial, the county funds. If we only want to address the ones that are at the county home, whereas more, we would allocate funds to cemetery commission's budget for them to arrange for that, for indigent burials that are placed there. So I just kind of wanted to have that conversation. I did reach out to all of the other general assistance offices in the state. And that's the spreadsheet that you have in front of you. The average burial provided through general assistance offices in Iowa is $1,357. We pay $1,600 right now plus $300.
I'm sorry, Becky, where was the average? Is it?
It's on the.
And we, right now, at this point, or is ours 1,900?
So ours is 1,600 for the actual cremation to the funeral home and $300 goes to the person that opens and closes the grave. And fits the marker at the county hall. So there's only a couple of other counties. That's the second column. You'll see like the $175, 300, 300, 900. Those are the amounts those counties provide for the opening and closing of the grave.
So in the records, I'm sorry, am I interrupting? I have a question. So the records that the Pioneer Cemetery Commission, from my, what I have, what they give us, the county now pays 1,900. Which is basically what you have there. And they'd like it raised, they'd like to add a cement vault and a monument marker, right? Which would raise it to 25, approximately 2,500. I'd like to make a decision either way, but I, do you know what, what does the VA pay?
They have the same policy as G.
We have the same policy as they.
Yep.
So they pay 1,900. So.
They have an additional for military rights.
How much does the actual cremation cost?
I called around. I, I've been told this last, I called two crematories. It's, it's around $400.
Okay, so if we're paying $1,600 and that would include the cremation.
Correct.
What else does it include for the $1,600?
I, so they, they recover the deceased body, they transport it to the cremation facility and then bring it back. So I don't know what else is involved other than that.
You said the cremation was about $400?
But you did call around and see if rates were somewhat that range. And that's local, correct?
I don't know if there's anybody here in town. There's one to do it.
So who does it now, horse?
I don't know where, like if we pay, we pay Carson and Son or Hackmans directly.
Yeah, so it's local, yeah.
So they take care, whatever crematory they need.
Okay, but we pay the local.
Funeral home, correct, right. So we pay them the one month sum. We pay them the $1,600 and if it goes to the county home, we pay the additional 300. I would be in favor of just removing the burial opening, the grave opening and closing of $300 and putting money in the cemetery commission's budget because this would only pertain to those burials. Most people that we provide cremation services for are provided their remains after cremation. And they keep them. I've never paid for anybody else to have cremated, cremated remains. That was not in the county home.
So they would say they would put $1,500 or enough for five burials in their budget.
Right. And then they can establish their policy of what they're going to require. Once they're, once the ashes are handed to them, they can, they can have Steve or whoever would do it, provide for the things that they wanted them or the case.
So what do we have for agreement or disagreement on the added vault? And the monumental? That would be what?
I mean, some people would just take the urn and take it home and put it on the metal.
Right. See, and these are specific to people that have no next of kin. So those are the only people that go to the county home. Somebody that didn't have anybody to contact.
Basically, yeah, they don't have anybody.
But we also talked about the $300 is to dig a grave for a casket, right?
No.
They only accept cremation, so I would assume no.
Any new burials at this.
It costs $300 to dig a hole to.
Well, I don't know that. I don't know what that includes.
That's been there a long time then.
Yeah.
Take a recharge.
Yeah.
And maybe that was. Yeah, I think maybe that charge was for the size of a casket.
Yeah, so it's gotta be.
Our policy doesn't allow for, it only allows, allows for the cremation, so I don't know if that changed. I don't know. This is what I was handed and this is what I've worked off of, but maybe back in the day they did provide.
So if people, I'm sorry, so if people require assistance through GA, it has to be cremation only.
If they're going to the county home, it has to be cremation.
Okay, but if it's not, they have to work with funeral home to accept the amount of money that we pay for a burial.
Which is $2,200 and.
So then we pay $2,200?
And veterans, if they're a veteran, they would, veterans and parents would pay that.
So they pay the same assistance amount, but they allow for military rights and that may be a separate charge that they provide for those.
So what is the policy for 2,200? So we pay, we pay 1,600 for cremation and 2,200 for burial?
16 plus the 300, 1,900.
Only for the county hall ones?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know? So most of them are the 1,600.
And that may be negotiable too yet, if it's a three by, or one.
No, they're only about 18 inches.
Yeah, 18 inches by 18. If it's a postal digger and it's an hour and a half, I don't know.
Yeah, and then the proposal that they sent back in July, it looks like they've got the estimate for burials, 12, 25, something like this.
Yes.
So I don't see where they've accounted for the 300 because our, our cremations are 1,600 for the funeral home. So I don't know where they've accounted for the $300 up above there. I almost feel like it would possibly only be $300 more that they're asking for and not 600.
What they're asking, they're asking for the. The vault and the marker. And the marker wasn't like 350.
Marker was 350, monument, the small monument and the engraving. And the cement vault was 100.
What was that fiberglass one? They're saying about the same price.
I, I don't know that that's not more than beyond the vault. You had to earn, that's the urn that she was talking about, fiberglass, right, or no?
No, they had another little white. But I don't know, maybe that was the same price as the concrete.
How many burial?
Hard plastic vault was 90 bucks.
Okay.
So there's not much difference in that. Total for urn and vault. Urns were 100 to 125.
So do we need the urn if you have the other one? I mean, they said some were being buried just in the plastic bag or whatever, but.
And that's what I think they want to avoid.
Yeah.
My point is, I don't know what kind of urn we have to have if we're in a concrete vault.
That's where I'm going to.
If the concrete vault is sealed up, I don't have.
Well, it does say that. It says a cement vault's 100. No urn is needed if it can be, it can be sealed with the back of ashes inside.
Oh, okay.
If you do the cement vault for $100. And the monument engraving.
So the 1,600 we pay at the funeral home includes the urn?
I think no.
No.
I assume they get it back in some sort of a box.
Okay, county pays for each burial, 1,900. This includes cremation, metal grave marker, white thermoplastic urn box. Includes 25 for medical exam, includes 300 for Steve Till, and that's to dig a hole. So that should, we should really go and see if that's the case.
I think he was that one, when you guys met with him, Luanne had sent me the meeting minutes of.
He was not here.
He was not there.
No. I've never seen Steve. And if Steve had a request that he buried the two that he had on hand. He was currently holding.
Okay, still I think Steve and Don and Luanne have a.
I still think that digging the hole for the, for the ashes can't be more than $100.
So that's the ashes and the whatever marker they're using. And I don't know what that, what kind of state they put out there.
Well, there were two different kinds of markers that they showed us. One, they was just flat. And then one was built up a little bit with longer lasting engraving is what they told us. It lasts longer than the flat.
I, I guess I, my own thoughts are, and this is my personal thoughts, is that we shouldn't be spending any more on an indigent burial than we should for a veteran. Am I saying that right?
Yes, they are the same. The only difference is if we would have a veteran that had no next of kin that had to go to the county home.
I agree, but we're talking about raising the Pioneer Cemetery's rate, so then it wouldn't be the same. And we were talking about raising it from 1,900 to 2500.
Right, the difference is we are then offering to find, to have. If my loved one died and I couldn't afford to bury them, but I'm not a veteran, I'm not, they're not indigent, or they're not, they have me as a next of kin. I would come to the county and say, I need to have my spouse cremated or whoever it is. But I'm not coming to you and saying, I need you to find me a plot and a marker and have them buried for me. We don't do that for people that have next of kin's. We're only doing this because they're going to the county home because they have nowhere else to be laid to rest.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does.
So we are incurring those expenses because of them being placed on our land.
Okay, but we're still talking about raising it because of the monument?
But if you did raise it, even a veteran would have that same service.
Yes.
Yeah. But our question is, do we want to raise it by that much? Right? Is that the question intact here or? What are we trying to decide?
And you talked earlier about the $300 that could be, we could remove that and have the Pioneer Cemetery add that to their budget. Is that what you said?
We only pay the $300 for the ones that go to the county home.
Right.
So if they want to increase that and do these other things. I guess my question is, are you wanting general assistance to coordinate all of this every time I do indigent burial with no next of kin? And pay for it? Is that what you're asking? I don't know, but the question was when you guys originally had the conversation with them, I guess.
Well, I think it was just the money to do it.
Yeah, and I think at that time you were collecting information like you did very nicely. And we were going to make a decision if we're going to raise that or not, right?
Like, so do you understand what I'm saying that if, if you're, if somebody comes to you that does have family, they generally just retain the urn or the ashes after cremation?
So there's no.
They're not placed, they're not.
They're now burial cost for that.
We couldn't, we couldn't increase our home enough to get a plot at a cemetery to provide for that to every burial.
No.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And that's, we're just going to pay 1,600. Right now, that's all we're going to pay is 1,600.
If you increase it to 25 for everybody, you're just going to increase for the people that don't need to bury at the county home. The money just goes directly to the funeral. So either the funeral home's going to get 1,600 now, plus we're going to give the cemetery commission $600 to work with to do the appropriate burial. Or everybody's going to get 2,500. The people that don't need laid to rest at the county home, the money just goes to the funeral. So essentially you're paying more for the cremation to the funeral home. Does that make sense to you, Mike? I get what you're saying.
Kind of, but it doesn't make any sense to do that to me. What's your, what's your explanation to me?
No, actually the funeral home, they 2,500 to turn that in the burial. I think we need to.
I mean, we don't coordinate, right, for the people that have a place or have a mantle to go on, we don't coordinate finding a plot for them to be laid to rest at. And I don't know that it would be within our means to provide for that for general assistance, to find an actual plot if I need to be buried at Mount Hill Cemetery.
Well, that certainly wouldn't be your job.
I would hope not. It's kind of what I'm getting at. I don't know. I mean, do you know what I mean? I mean, that just doesn't mean, what's a plot?
And the thing is, well, the thing is, if they had nobody as claiming them, why would it matter where they're buried?
That's why they all go to the county home.
Yeah.
Well, I just bought two.
Okay.
And it was $550.
For the pair or each?
For the pair.
That sounds reasonable.
That's Sacred Heart.
I mean, we just have to incorporate the stipulation to our GA.
But that's a full plot though, too, correct?
Yeah.
So that's not a.
No.
But do they require the same size plot whether your ashes are? I don't know.
No.
I doubt. No, I know, one of my uncles was buried with my grandparents. I mean, yeah, one of my uncles was buried with my grandparents in an urn on the same plot.
Yeah, my sister buried with my parents too, but that's, that's, I don't consider another plot, no.
So if we provided the same amount to all burials across the border, they would have to provide documentation to us what the plot's going to cost, where they're going to go.
We don't want to have.
Then we have to get, make sure all of this stuff is in compliance with where they're going to go. Opposed to just the cemetery commission handling the ones that go there.
I think the cemetery commission should handle those that go to the county home cemetery. And if they need to add some additional funds for a marker and the burial, the digging of the grave. Because they're not going to have more than one or two a year if they. So it's not going to be a huge influx of.
So they need to put that in their budget.
It makes the most sense to me.
And they can levy for it too. They need to, I mean, I think it's out there.
Right now, I actually give the $300 to the funeral home and they coordinate with Steve Till for the rest, so I don't know how that pass through works.
But I think that the cemetery commission has to negotiate with Steve Till about the cost.
Digging.
Digging.
They need to do an RFP and see if somebody else, I mean, it, it should go off a bit like anything else.
As if it's, it's, if it's just an urn, it certainly isn't going to be $300. And they can put the extra money towards either the marker or the urn. So I just think we need to communicate with Joanne and say, you know, we need to have that added to your. So I just think we need to communicate with Joanne and say, you know, we need to have that added to your. Your budget when you come in to present it to the board, one or two a year. And.
Start it out with two a year and see where that.
Can we put a limit on that? I mean, end of budget.
On what? The number of burials?
We don't know that.
We don't know. No, we don't know how many it's gonna be, but we also know that they usually have. Ending balance with some funds in it.
Right.
So if there's three, I mean, they would be able to absorb that and, you know, I just don't, I don't see the need for us to. Deal with the funeral homes any differently than we're doing now.
I just don't know, we'll just accept providing that to every burial when somebody else isn't coordinating that.
I agree.
So going off of this a little bit, but the Pioneer Cemeteries, we take care of that.
They're regulated by the state.
Yeah, they're regulated by the state and they have to get approval.
How many burials can be there in the last fifty years? Yeah.
And that's changed some too. It went from, what was it, five or six into twelve now.
Yep.
And now I think there's legislation in there that says even if they go over the twelve, they're still. Will be considered a Pioneer Cemetery.
Yeah, I know there's legislation trying to. Take away the number of people buried within so many years to kick you out of. Pioneer Cemetery.
It is it, do you know, as far as regulations in a Pioneer Cemetery, do they limit it now also to a, to a cremation? Or can you have?
Oh, no.
I think in her, in her minutes, it did say that. I don't know if it's their rules here or if it's in the code. I don't know that.
I know she talked about this family that works from a certain area and they wanted to come back here to be buried in the family cemetery. And so. I guess, I don't know how we could tell them, yes, you have to have them cremated if they didn't want to.
I think they did for that one though. I think they did on that one. They were from California, but their great grandparents were down by Preston.
I think that was cremation.
Yeah. And that was a big. Big write up in television probably turned on. It was neat.
Well, that was out of Bud, wasn't it? Reed?
They require them to be done by hand.
Yeah, because.
Well, if it's cremation, yeah, that's only this big though. You can't take it back or dig a hole.
In case they hit another grave is what they're saying.
Oh, well. But we designated.
Regulation, they have to be a certain size, certain depth, certain wood.
We designated a different area where there is no burials at the county home.
So we think.
We added to that cemetery for that purpose, oh, correct?
Outside thirty six feet wide.
And you wonder because part of that has been farmed for a while and you know how much erosion there is. I mean, some of that could be literally a foot in the ground yet.
So, yeah, so that's the deciding factor. If you want to provide the all of this to every burial. And that would just take some more work from our policy or if you just want to have it.
I just don't want to raise our overall cost for burial.
No, I don't either. I like the idea of just putting that on the cemetery commissions.
I think we just need to talk to Joanne and tell them this is what the board decided.
As far as general assistance, we're gonna remain the same, correct?
I personally don't see the need to raise above the sixteen hundred that we pay for cremation.
I don't either.
It seems like more than that.
The only question that one of the funeral homes posed was if their actual permit fees were to increase, and at which time I would understand that.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Yeah. So their costs have not changed and.
I mean, when you did your research, did you have a breakdown of costs from funeral homes? No, transportation.
When I do a burial, they give me a certificate that states.
Itemized invoice?
Doesn't have mileage on there or any of that stuff. It just basically says they paid about four zimmer, the permit fee.
So it's basically itemized, kind of itemized.
I can identify one and show you.
Yeah. And to you, is it legit? I mean, it's, the costs are legitimate.
It doesn't matter because that's just what the policy guidelines were set at. So basically, we're saying for the inconvenience for the service, we're contracting with you. If you accept, they get to choose their funeral homes within Jackson County. If they are willing to do the cremation for the sixteen hundred dollars, that's what our policy pays. So they have to give the twenty five dollars to the medical examiner from the sixteen hundred and they have to pay the crematory, whatever their fees are.
So the medical examiner, don't we pay that on our? What's that coming through?
This is like a depth certificate permit fee. I think it's.
Medical examiner, as far as that, she'd wrap it or wherever it is, that's through.
So you're talking about, those would be like autopsy fees that are paid through.
Lynn's transportation.
It's my understanding, because I asked Sarah this question. Why is there a twenty five dollar fee paid from the funeral home to Dr. Peterson? It's our understanding. Is because it's a cremation, it means that you no longer can have any more investigation if this were a criminal matter or whatever. And so that's why. Doctor Peterson has to give the okay for the cremation. That he has signed off as the medical examiner that it's okay to cremate the body, that no further investigation is necessary.
I guess that's a good check.
And that leads me into another discussion as far as burial goals. We had a case where the medical examiner ordered, ordered a cremation of a body that was unclaimed from Scott County. They were not a resident of Jackson County, but he ordered it, so I had to pay for it. Which, I don't know if the medical examiner should have money in their budget to pay for that. Our policy is generally you have to go back on the county where you lived. So I wouldn't have paid for those. I would have referred them to that county, well, since the body had remained unclaimed for a certain amount of time in Scott County. And they were transported from here, even though they didn't live here, he just went ahead and ordered them to be cremated. So, of course, it had already been done before I got into the conversation, got the bill from Carson, said he needed to pay this. I was like, wait a minute. So that's kind of one of those other things that.
We'll just send the bill to them.
To the unknown, yeah. Just send the ashes.
Well, he ordered it to be done, so.
So, yeah, if you want me to do something, you just need to let me know if you want.
I think we want you to keep things the way they currently are and we'll.
Address the Pioneer Cemetery.
And we'll discuss with the Pioneer Cemetery Commission how it's gonna be handled from the county here.
And when that takes place, let me know, because then we would need to just revise.
We will do that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks.
Yep.
Okay, where was I?
Well, we haven't, don't have Marty till ten o'clock.
Marty's not gonna be here. Marty is, an update on Marty is he's out at the care facility while the weather's nice yet. With the. Trying to level off the septic field. Which we have called Kimberly and so that make sure that we can drive over that with the skidload. Question is, yes, we come back with that. So we. Sure, make a long story short, we got Frank involved because he knows how that system, he was there when that system was put in. The information Kimberly got when she checked with other authorities is that. We're only allowed to put three or four inches on them on level spots. Well, I said, at one time, it was always, it was level. And I asked Frank about it. He said, yes, it was level. So I said, why can't we level it back up? They're all in a meeting there today, all, all of them, so.
Well, it should be level. If it's trenched down, water's gonna travel down.
Down and.
And that's.
And that's why, and that's why it settled like it did. So hopefully they come up with, they're all, they're on the same page when they get down. That's all the matter, so we're, everybody's okay with it. And huh?
The pond looks.
It's full.
I saw, I saw.
It is. If you've not been up there, it's pretty, it's pretty awesome.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. No, they fixed the dike, the county fixed the dike with their, with their dozer and. Which we'll be probably getting a bill for, but it really looks good. They put an overflow tube in it.
Wonder.
I couldn't believe it, a water.
As of yesterday, I think, yeah, as of yesterday, I think the corn's out, so everything looks good up there. The cattle's out.
I always wonder, I think with Prairie Creek out there, the, the pond that went in. It's like, well, you know, it's a really small watershed, you know, and so we. I mean, we got the pump from DNR to keep the rivers filled, so we ended up just putting on a pump line that we can hook up Prairie Creek and pop into that. But it's never needed to be pumped. I mean, it's amazing how much water stays in there.
So, I mean, if we can retain enough water in that pond over the summer, then we do not need to have them cattle up in that yard. Where the water, the water, water is, and there's plenty of shade down in the timber. I was told, so they don't need that yard or that building that we're attempting to stay, so we can use that for storage in my opinion.
But is that pond fenced?
Yeah. Or brand new fence?
Well, to get the cattle out of it. I mean, if you want to use water from a pond, it should have another source of the water to go to a tank. Or else they'll go out there and stand in it and just really contaminate the whole water system.
Well, I don't know. We've always had ponds on our farms for the last sixty years, so I see, I see cattle.
And, you know, but, yeah, I'm not saying that they won't stand.
Sign on it that says no swimming.
I don't think you're gonna fence the pond off and let the pond drain into something else.
I mean, I've seen that done, but, yeah. Maybe that's with more cattle, but we can further discuss that. But anyway, that's, that's an update on the, on the, what's going on up there, and he's still getting bids.
From another gentleman for the sidewalk concrete, because. There isn't some discrepancies in the amount of concrete and what was done there, so. So Marty will not be here. He's.
I, I called Shelley over this morning. I think we're at a point, I need some direction from the board as far as this March vote. Do you think it's gonna happen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it needs to happen. I mean, it's.
Okay.
And it would be March second, right? Isn't that what you said?
Yes, March second.
The ninth of the second.
I, I guess what I'm suggesting then is let's be ahead of the game instead of. All of a sudden scrambling to get this, the paperwork and such with the holidays and such. Shelley would have to get a hold of bond council. I would just as soon start working on this now. And and not pressuring bond council to get all the paperwork and such to us. So if it's your desire to have that vote for the bond on March second, Mike?
Yes, so I guess my question is here, so we skipped a few agenda items, so we're in unfinished business and we're talking about the jail project. Correct?
Correct.
On our agenda. All right, thank you.
Yes. So, yes, that's where I'm at, is I want to be ahead of the game instead of behind the game. So if it is your desire to, to have this vote on March second. Then I would like Shelley to get a hold of bond council and bond council will ask us some questions as far as. What are you going to, I mean, as far as the jail project itself, you know, itself, what is that cost? And then what do you plan on bonding for? And those are the questions that bond council will be asking us. So are you gonna, are you gonna build a seven million dollar jail? Are you gonna build a four million dollar jail?
Well, it was my understanding from our talks with John that we were looking at six point three million.
Okay.
And then we talked about it. We wanted to lower that, okay, and I was thinking, the final numbers we told John was six point two. But we also wanted to.
We talked, I talked to Shelley and Lisa somewhat. I talked to Sarah about this too. If, if looking, when we had our last budget. Final budget, so we had a carryover basically in our capital improvement. If we could go ahead and use the capital improvement for that, and it's my understanding that we could do that, so. My thought process was, and I don't know what you guys think about this, is if we can. Lower that bond, it's like, just like me at home, if I'm gonna build a garage, I would save for a couple of years. And so can we take? Use our carryover capital improvement and say in the next two years, we will have. Three hundred thousand to put towards that at capital improvement, to put towards that jail, then we can bond for five point nine. I, I, is that sound reasonable?
Anything we can do to have it be less than six million, because that's what everybody said, you know, when we had our. Meetings and stuff before, you know, if it was less than six million, our chances of getting it passed are gonna be much stronger. Plus, it's important for us to figure out and to find out from the bond council. Because the last time, when we talked, this was a long time ago, about it was, the bond was, interest rate was like one point five.
Yeah.
It's crazy what it is.
Really, really low. I think it's, I think it's two point, maybe zero, two point one or something now, maybe. I don't know.
I never heard.
But, I mean, that's, I mean, even thirty year, fifteen fixed, year fixed or two point two five, so. I'm sure this bond is, like you said, less than two.
When I was talking to, I think it was on Delaware County.
Okay.
They said with the bond issues, the way it was now, with the interest rates that they were being charged, they were, it was gonna save them about a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Cute. So I think we need to definitely move forward with the March second vote, and if we can.
Do you think it, it should be a wise move to reach out to Jeff Heil? Are you gonna use Jeff Heil again as your bond counsel and say?
I think probably.
John has been talking to Jeff with, with Delaware County.
Okay.
And then I said, well, he's, I think he's getting the numbers to get to Marla for the flyer.
Okay.
Well, we'd have to make sure that if we're, if we're gonna, if we're able to use that capital funds money. And if we were looking at six point two, and if we take three hundred thousand dollars off of that, we're at the five point nine.
Yes.
And so. Those are the figures we would want in the, in the flyer that we're gonna mail out to the public.
All right, so I guess that's the main thing. That's why I want to try and kind of get working on this, so Shelley can get a hold of bond council. I'm sure there's gonna be some holiday time with everybody and. And I guess that was my main concern, is that I wanted to get ahead of this. And it's also a very unique time, because it is budget time. Right now, there is just short of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars sitting in our capital improvement fund. So I think that's a very achievable goal.
In two years, we probably have two years to do it.
Exactly, exactly. So, yeah.
And when we're in budgeting sessions, we can just. Appropriate some additional funds to the capital improvement fund and make sure that by the end of two years, we're gonna have the three hundred thousand dollars to. Seventy five thousand dollars on the land, so that's done.
Right.
And, you know, I'm just really curious because I can't imagine it's gonna cost much to excavate, to build a building. Because it's perfectly flat land. And everything is there. The utilities are all there, so that's not gonna be a big issue.
Couple curb cuts and that's about it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's really a nice setup.
Yeah. Okay, so what I'm hearing from you is that we have, it looks, sounds like we have the okay from the board to have Shelley get a hold of bond council. Six point two is what you're thinking. I just want to make sure that Shelley writes it down. Six point two is what the project should cost and bond.
Six point two is what we ended up because.
We cut, because we bought the land already.
And then we're gonna bond for five point nine.
Yep.
Okay.
So that he can put the figures together.
Yep.
For the five point nine bond issue, so that we can look at. They can put together some figures for our flyer as to what the impact would be on property tax.
And I guess just for curiosity, if someone talks to John, have him talk to Jeff to see what the interest rate is, not that it makes a difference, just more curiosity than anything.
Could be.
He sent a flyer or email last week on the proposed six point. Six point three, and the interest rate was on there.
Oh, I didn't see that. Okay, so at least we can move forward. I guess that's the main thing.
I think he was, what he was, what he was doing with the information, it was a bond analysis.
Okay.
And he was sending it to Marla for the flyer.
Okay.
So I had called him and I said, you know, don't, don't use them numbers yet until we discuss if we think we can reduce this. So I've been kicking it back and forth, you know, but.
And do you know what your tentative target time is to send the flyer out?
I think she wants to send it out the first, the end of December, after the holiday mail is done.
Right after the first of the year, probably, yeah.
Okay, and it's not gonna be in an envelope.
Okay.
It's gonna be.
Full page.
It's gonna be an eight. Eleven by eight or whatever it is, and it'll be colored and it'll be on both sides with just a place for the. Because it's gonna go to every household in Jackson County.
Okay. So it's not going to be specific to a name, it's just specific to an address?
A resident?
No, I think it's gonna be to a name. I'll, I'll check with Marla, but I don't want it to just be to a resident.
Okay.
But I'll check, I'll check.
I was gonna say.
And another thing that.
So it's specific to a voter?
Yes.
Right.
I think, you know, one of the things that Marla put, I think we all got an email from her this week. And she thought, she was suggesting we not put the floor plan of the jail on it. I think it should be there.
I think it should be too.
I think her point was that, you know, it could be controversial to someone looking and say, well, here, we'll lay it out like that. Everybody's got a better idea. But at this time, this is the floor plan that we're looking at. If we want to tweak that before.
We still can't.
Sure can, yeah.
And because, you know, I know that, I know that Brent has talked to John several times. And he has some thoughts about the floor plan. And as the incoming sheriff, we wanna listen to what he said. But I also told him, you know, that it, it's the decision of the board, what the floor plan is. And we'll, we're more than willing to sit down with you and John and look at it and discuss it.
Yeah.
But in, at, in the end, it's the three of us that decides what that.
Well, certainly wanna listen to the experts and get their opinion and, and the guy that's gonna use it, so yeah, let's, let's just move forward with it, the way we're talking here and done with the numbers I'd like to use, I'd like to basically say, we have a three hundred thousand dollar down payment. Yeah, that's just like anything else.
Yeah.
That you buy or build or whatever it is, you gotta have something down.
I think that's a good direction that we can work with.
Look through, and I think it's what the people asked us to do. We, we, we made the jail smaller. And, uh, we cut some costs, well.
With that being said, um, I don't know if it was mentioned in the, in our meeting, we're scheduled to go look at the Delaware County facility, which is just about complete.
Yeah, moving in in January.
We were scheduled for Friday of this week to go to it. And apparently they're working on the floor ceiling, so.
Ceiling the floors.
We will not be able to go this week, but hope to set something up for next week if anybody wants to know that.
Okay, I thank you for that.
So that was under.
Yeah.
That was under.
Unfinished business.
Items.
Marty's not gonna be here, we have a budget work session, is somebody coming in, or are they zooming in?
Here's zooming in.
This is the email, this is point, yeah, this is two point one.
Yeah.
And that's what, what, what we've always done here before. Is figure out the high side, is what he's doing, so it could be less than that. So tax rate per thousand, thirty-two cents.
Well, the payment went from like four hundred and fifty thousand to three seventy-seven on this one.
Oh, wow.
So that's eighty thousand savings. Or seventy, seventy-three thousand savings just in that interest drop. Looks good.
Okay, thank you, Shelley.
You're welcome.
Just make sure we remember when we get to budget session. I don't think we'll forget. So I'm, we're supposed to let, we're supposed to let Marla know about the floor plan? So is it the consensus of the board that the floor plan be on the flyer?
I think it's okay, I mean, if somebody's got an opinion, they can surely let us know and we will discuss it. Yeah, I don't have an issue with that. I mean, I think it's a good floor plan, it's nice and square, and it's got the option of adding twelve beds, very simply. And we still have an option of adding on to it, it's gonna be built, so we could add on to it too.
Yeah, that's a good.
So you can tell Marla that, we want the floor plan on the flyer.
Okay.
Or the brochure, or whatever she calls it.
She was looking for another testimonial too, I don't know if you.
Yeah.
That, if, if you read the email, um, and I know you did, but that was, if we didn't put that, she would have room on it for another testimonial.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if there would be room with the floor plan.
I thought there was originally too, but well, maybe I'm wrong.
Luan can look up the email, but I was thinking that's what it said.
Well, I think it's just as easy, if you're gonna talk to Marla, just ask her that too, if there's room for another testimonial with the floor plan on it. Is that what you said, Jack?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Cause she said that if we, if we didn't put the testimonial, if we didn't put the floor plan, then there would be room for, and she was looking for a specific type of person, so.
Okay. If we don't include the floor plan, we have room for another quote testimonial. So if we do include the floor plan, she doesn't think we have room for another one.
Okay, we'll see.
I'll ask you.
Yeah. Okay, our next on our, our agenda, but it's not until ten forty-five.
Can we push our budget work session back?
I can call and see if they're ready. We can discuss.
Oh, they're physically coming here?
No, 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 no.
Everybody's zooming?
I think everybody's zooming.
And budget work session was scheduled for?
And fifteen and twenty-three.
Oh, yeah, we're close to that. Is there any other, uh, reports from boards and commission reports?
We had our Isaac's, uh, executive board meeting yesterday, and we decided to do it all online. Even the.
So spring school also?
Spring school's still out there, but, uh, annual meeting, the January meeting will be online.
That's like on a Thursday.
Offstairs is on the fourteenth, I think. And then our main one is on the twenty-eighth, but that'll also be zone.
And didn't I read where it's gonna be scheduled, like the different offices will be on at a different time?
I know the email that I got said that specifically on the second day would be for the auditors portion of new auditor school.
Yeah, all of that will be online and it will stay online after about two weeks, so have it completely online. So you can refer to it in up to the next two years.
Go back to it and watch it.
Yeah.
And so I, I sure hope that there's something coming down the pipe that we can have that spring school for the sake of new hires, new elections, new officials.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we do have it planned out and it's socially distanced with tables.
Yeah, I read that in, yeah.
So. And hopefully that'll happen, but along with that.
The vendors were supposed to be that much further apart and, uh, you know, as far as, and I'm sure you're gonna have less attendance, you know, with everything that's going on, people are.
So Ring, Ringtone, Hold County, they had one of their supervisors die, and I don't have the name, but.
Myo Minik.
Myo Minik, okay, both him and his wife went in for it, and they both died on the same day.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
And what, what county did you say?
Ringhold.
Right, hold.
Ringhold.
Right, hold.
I didn't even know that county had a supervisor pass away, awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I just saw yesterday, there was a, a payroll deputy in an office that passed away, so I mean, it's.
It's out there.
It is, you know.
And John had it, her, both her and her husband had had it, and they were, they were down pretty good with it. Not a good place to be.
No, I was sure, it's funny how it affects some, you know, I read, there, in the paper this morning, it was a fifteen-year-old from Madison, Wisconsin, passed from it, and then the next article was Grassley at eighty-seven, come back to work, and he didn't have any symptoms, and he tested for that.
Well, my cousin that lives in, um, Corin, Oklahoma, he and his wife both have it. She's in the hospital and she needed to have a ventilator, they didn't have any. So they were going to send her to Texas, they couldn't find a hospital in Texas that had one available. So they aired, aired her to Nebraska.
Oh, God.
And her husband is also ill with it and quite sick, but doesn't need the ventilator. But they can't find a room for him in a hospital in Oklahoma. So they're still waiting for someplace for him.
That's the scary part, and now with the Thanksgiving thing, and there, how many millions of people are out?
Yeah.
Houting about is like, wow.
Yeah.
Sad, sad deal.
Yeah. On the positive side of that, I've been reading cases every day, you know, in the paper. And we've actually been going down fairly well, so all the things are working out with the masks and the social distancing and.
Yeah. And people staying home.
Yeah.
And talked to a lot of different people over the phone and stuff in the last week. And most everybody I talked to is just, they're maybe a family. And if they had kids, they weren't even home, if they were adult kids for the holidays, yeah.
Um. I wonder if Todd's over there, if he, he wants us.
You know, if you still wanted to, if I covered everything, you want my.
Um, I think we can take a short recess at this time, will ya?
Sure.
We can certainly, we're, we're back, we will reconvene at this time, and we're joined by, with Todd Keeney, our interim county engineer, and he's gonna fill us in a little bit.
Oh, yeah? I guess I wasn't, I thought you had a question, that's why I came in.
No, we just didn't know if you had anything you wanted to throw at us. Uh, Mike had mentioned that, uh, you were reviewing where Alex was and what he was doing and.
Yeah, so we sent Alex that, if you recall, that list of, uh, day labor and contract liver bridges, that we wanted him to survey. We had a, we prioritized him one, two, three, so we wanted him to get all the ones and twos done. So he could proceed with design for the contract and then also the, at least do the hydraulic design part, so for the day labor bridges, then we could take that information. And then we could figure out whether you guys got beams in inventory we can use, depending on the length. Uh, or we need to get a hold of Dan to see what he had, or if we need to buy for that matter, so. Um, I just actually talked to Mike about that. Uh, Alex was saying he was gonna have the two or three day labors that we wanted to get done first done. When he gets those hydraulics done, then I think we'll just try and set up a meeting with him, or Mike, myself and Alex could sit down, go over the hydraulics part. Uh, so we're comfortable about the span length, and then once we have that, then I can get with Mike and we can start figuring out whether you guys basically what the superstructure needs to be, the number, number beams, size of beams, length of beams, whether you guys got them in inventory or whether uh, Trader does, or we need to go out and start getting pricing.
Okay, I guess, yeah, we didn't know if there was anything other special. You know, the one thing I was gonna ask you, I don't know if we asked you this last week or the week before, we talked about the South Main Bridge, street bridge, and I know there was an article or a statement or an email, something to the effect that they made the, the city made, made the decision to do that, have you talked to Gerald?
I tried to get a hold of him, he wasn't in the day I stopped, and I was gonna do it yesterday, I forgot about it.
But they were gonna stage it when they built it, and then I guess we never were contacted or even asked about it, so I don't know how you feel about it, but.
Do one side and then do the other side later, so that the traffic flow was still there. But what was, what, what does that do to the cost of the whole project when they do it that way?
When I talked to Dan Schrader, he said we're almost, that's like building two bridges.
Yeah, so I've heard people say, you know, anywhere between, you know, twenty to fifty percent additional cost. Uh, but the way the twenty-eight E was set up is the first million dollars of the construction cost is by the city. And as far as what the county's gonna provide, as far as the construction observation administration. You know, it, it, it'd probably take longer this way, but really that's your, that's your skin in the game, cost-wise, until they get up over that million dollars. I mailed, uh, Gerald. Gerald, yeah.
Yeah.
Last week, because I was going back through my records, I still don't have, I, and I'm aware, we don't have a signed twenty-eight E yet.
From the city?
Some of the city. So.
Well, I know the last time we talked about it, we didn't, but I.
Well, then I thought we got one shortly after that. Oh, we'll check in.
I've never seen a signed copy.
Yeah, I, I, I have, I don't have one, I don't have it scanned.
Yeah.
I think we'll check into that, put it that way, but.
So, uh, cause the city kinda did something where they approved it, subject to the approval of their attorney. Uh, if I recall, which really isn't approval, so you sign it, so we just need to get a signed copy and like, whether they stage it, that's really up to them, cause they're, they're doing the design, I mean, and they're.
Even though we own sixty-seven percent of it.
And, but I guess the way they're, the way I look at it is they're paying for almost the entire bridge to replace it, so. Um, and really, it shouldn't be, that's a whole other discussion, really. If you want, the discussion should be is after the bridge is replaced, they need to probably fix their annexation boundary.
Take, you know. Take that little jog out.
Well, they, they did it the way they did it for a purpose.
And it puts the, the minimal amount of jurisdiction, you know, that the city has to, but on, I guess the flip side of that is they've applied for the money and got this, the big city BR money.
Sure, sure.
They're basically paying for the cost of the replacement, so, uh, which is good.
Somebody is. The grant is.
Yeah.
It's all tax dollars, but, yeah.
Road use tax, yeah.
Okay, well, I appreciate the update, hope everything's going well, you had a good holiday?
Pretty, pretty quiet.
Yeah.
That's what everybody says.
So my, my dad is the oldest of fifteen kids. So when the Kennys get together for Thanksgiving, it, we usually have it like at the grandma's media center, and we have like a hundred and twenty-some people. Well, this was the first year that I can remember since ever, that we didn't do it because of the whole COVID thing, so. I don't, it was kind of, it was sad, cause you're used to being there, and then we're not probably gonna have Christmas either, so. We're supposed to go around and videotape each family, supposed to do a little videotape of what everybody's up to, and then they're gonna, we're supposed to email it to one of the aunts, my aunt's, my dad's sister, and then she's gonna put it on.
Put it together, huh? Well, that's.
That's a great idea.
That is a good idea, and it's interesting how people are coming up with them ideas.
Yeah, it was a tough one for us last week.
Marilyn and me and our cat.
It's, yeah, it's unusual, yeah.
Appreciate it, okay. Happy, I emailed it to you and to everybody, so we do have a signed copy.
Excellent, okay.
Well, Mike and the city signed it, so.
Well, there you go, so, um, that lays everything out, so now we're just, uh, basically, I'll talk to Mike and let him know. Uh, email maybe, I'll forward what you sent me, so he has it, and then basically, the county's responsibility is just to do the CACO during construction. And then, uh, if the, if the cost goes over that million dollars, then the next question we need to what we'll probably end up doing is having the county's BR fund reimburse the city BR money, so really there shouldn't be any out of pocket, when I say out of pocket, I mean local funds that need to go to that from the secondary road plan.
Okay.
That was the goal, is that you guys don't have to send money to the city.
Take it.
You're providing a service for the, uh, inspection and observation, but you're not actually kicking money in from the secondary road.
Yeah, we didn't wanna jeopardize our five-year road plan to the, to that effect. If I'm correct, Todd, when we have a signed copy, I, something about recording, they have recorded with the state, or?
If it's technically a twenty-eight E, it needs to go to the county reporter and the state reporter.
Yeah.
The city took it, you're sending it to the state, and I took it down the hall to the reporter's office.
There you go, that's how efficient we are.
So the city got money for, to bring the trail to the bridge, that was another grant, I think, is that part?
I think they applied for one to do that.
I, I knew of them applying for, but I didn't know if they were.
So would any of that money go towards the trail portion of the bridge? Or not?
I don't know.
Don't know how they.
No idea.
I guess, I guess it depends on how they apply for the grant, if, if their application said, you know, a certain part of this money is for the.
Or maybe that million dollar grant came with that money for that trail part of the bridge too.
Yeah.
I don't know how they get.
So the, I was just curious. Probably limited to the, coming to the trail or to the bridge, and then after the bridge, I would, hey, if it's a trail and the bridge part of it should have been included in the bridge application, I don't know.
I would think you can apply if you're gonna do a trail and you're gonna cross a waterway as part of your application, you could say it's so much for the the trail on the lane and then the trail bridge, it would be part of one application.
Yeah.
Since it's on a public highway bridge, it might, it might, it might be a little different, but if it's actually, uh, uh, set aside with a barrier and it's its own separate trail off the traveled way, then you probably could get money for it, I'm guessing, I just don't know how they apply for it.
Yeah. Well, we'll find out, we'll try to get all we can.
And maybe that's how they get the million dollar grant too, saying that part of it was for.
Yeah.
Record, bridge, recreation, that's always a plus. When you're doing grants.
Yeah, so you'd probably be seeing, not seeing less and less, but the, the amount of time I probably spend will be decreasing here towards the end of the year, so.
Well, we hope that, we certainly hope that you were available for our new hire, if he's got questions and.
Oh, certainly, yeah. So, yeah.
Information.
I kind of sent that little one-page, I don't know what you'd call it, of.
What you had started and.
Focus areas that, moving forward, and, you know, if he wants to sit down and go through that, but those are kind of what I would see is things that should be addressed right away, your areas of improvement, and then kind of some long-term planning thing, program things to implement. You know, I'm sure he'll have his own ideas once he's here, get into the mix of things.
Well, we sure appreciate it, well, you.
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
No problem.
I've said repeatedly, I learned more in the last six months than I did in twenty years.
Well, I don't know about all that. It's good, I'm glad we could, we could help out and keep Jackson County going, so.
Well, we're nice friendly neighbors, anyway.
We don't live that far away, right? All right, well, thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Have a good holidays.
Yep, you too.
Okay, are we down to our budget work session yet? Who's available? Dixie Lee is on.
Okay, I'm here.
I'm here, we can, we can hear you just fine, too, Lee. Good morning.
Good morning.
Is Don?
Yeah, I don't know if Don is going to make it, he apparently has COVID, and he's not.
Told us.
Yeah, so he may join us in a minute or two here, I don't know. But I guess, if you'd like, I'll go ahead.
Sure, that'll be fine.
Would you like a brief update on what we've been doing?
Sure, you certainly can.
All right, I'll, I'll keep it short. We want you to know that we have been having our monthly meetings. In spite of the pandemic, we've been doing that. And we have had to cancel the house tour, of course, there was no fair for us to participate in, and we were unable to do in-person education, all because of the COVID. But we did do some other work, we've consulted with interested parties on historic properties, we've maintained our website and Facebook page, and we've had real good activity on our, our website page. We've used the media, both with paid advertising and some articles. And we participated in a, in a photo contest through Wiki Commons called Wiki Loves Monuments. So we went out and took pictures of some of our historic sites and sent them into Wiki, so that they would be possibly getting some national recognition and attention for Jackson County. And we'll continue on that with some newspaper articles. And we did some research and discussion about the county-owned historic properties. And as you know, I, I believe you've received a letter from Don Wentworth about those. And so we are hoping to hear back from you on that at some time, about the conditions and, and the plans for those. So, that's a brief update, and of course, we'll be giving you our CLG report, which is due March first. But of course, that's not ready yet. So, did you all receive copies of the proposed budget?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. We're kind of unsure, as I know you are, about what's going to happen in, during the 2021 fiscal year because of COVID. So, we've made some allowances in case it's all over by then, or in case it's not. We have made a, a large budget item here for education, for mileage lodging and education, only because we don't know where it's going to be, or whether it's going to be virtual or in person. Chances are, it'll be closer to home that year. Now, this coming one in June of 2021, which is during this fiscal year, we've already got budget for that. But the one for, it'll be June of 2022, next fiscal year, it's more likely to be in the middle of the state or on this side of the state, but we really don't know. So we've got money budgeted for the registrations, hotels, and mileage for that. If it is an in-person, chances are not everyone will go, but if it's virtual, chances are most of us will attend it virtually, in which case, there'll be no mileage and no lodging. Then the other kind of large item is the publications and notices. If we're still struggling with the pandemic during that year, and we're unable to do educational programs or any kind of in-person activities, we might be able to do some outreach through the media with paid advertising. In addition, we make every effort to get articles in the paper that we don't pay for, of course, they're just stories written for the paper. But if we need to, or we'd like to be able to do a little advertising, we did also put in for our, let's see, we have to renew our website dues, and also, of course, we have the National Association of Preservation Commission's dues. The other things are kind of standard, and no one of them is a particularly large amount. We just don't know what we're going to be up against, and so we're asking for a teeny bit more than we did last year. We didn't spend our money last year, and chances are, we won't because of the COVID. This coming year, we're just asking for another three hundred and twenty dollars over and above what we had last year.
I'm sorry, I had, I had a question for Lisa during that. The unspent funds comes back to the general fund, is that correct?
Well, as far as I know, Shelley's been rolling it forward.
So, if there's a, okay, we won't know.
I think it can be done either way, can't it? I, I guess that's a question for Lisa, but I think one time she rolled it forward and another time, maybe she didn't, I'm not sure. But I, I, it seemed to me there was a possibility to roll it forward.
I guess it would depend on how much is rolled forward and what the budget looks like for the next fiscal year, I suppose, you know.
So. I'm sorry, my phone's ringing, you can probably hear that.
I don't have.
Don, was there anything you'd like to add? I hope you're doing well.
Is Don there?
You're muted, you're muted.
Let me have a mute.
Oh.
There you go.
That's right, Don. He's gonna have to turn, you may have to turn your speaker up, Don. I've unmuted you, but we still can't hear you.
Well, there he is.
Nope, still can't hear you, Don.
Um, Don, was that you trying to call me? If it was, why don't you give me another try and I'll answer it?
Call your sister.
Yeah. Call into the board.
Yeah, you could call into the board.
Or he's gotta turn his, his speaker up, his volume up on his computer.
Don, can you hear us? Don, are you trying to call someone?
Shake your head.
Do you see him?
Yeah.
I don't.
Okay, there's my cell phone.
Oh, now I see him. I had just you on my screen.
Oh, you've gotta put a checkerboard.
Is that you?
I didn't do that.
Okay, I have Don on the phone. Maybe if I put him on speaker, maybe you can hear him.
Actually, he could call the board office here. Well.
Yeah, Don, maybe you better call, call the board.
Hello, hold on a second.
You are on, Don, if you can hear me.
I can hear you, can you hear me?
Absolutely, loud and clear.
Okay. I'm not sure what that is.
Somebody must have their speaker on, speakerphone. Now I can't hear you. I can't hear anything.
Okay.
Well, we sure appreciate, we're still working on it, Don, and we hope you're feeling better and, and stay healthy and safe, and we'll do what we can until then.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yep, good luck.
He didn't add much from what you said, Lee.
Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah, he just wanted to keep the CLG in good standing, and hopefully he can work through whatever COVID provides for us in the next six months and, and see what happens.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, guys.
Yep, I don't have any questions either. Thank you.
Stay healthy.
All right, you too.
Yep. All right. So, Marion, you are next, if you are available. If you want to come up here, that's, that's entirely up to you, yeah, we're, we're, we're social distance, so.
Well, my husband and I hopefully had it over a month ago, and didn't get very sick, but don't think I'm contagious.
Thank God.
Yeah, they only give you three months, though, till you can get it again, is that right?
That's what I heard.
Take the vaccine every ninety days?
There was also an article in the TH today that somebody in one of the care facilities has got their second bout of it.
Yeah, yeah. That's unusual.
Yeah. Good morning, Marion.
Good morning, good morning.
Marion is from the library board?
Good to see you. Yes, I am, I'm representing the libraries of Jackson County. And we are asking for the five percent increase. I'm not sure where the county is at, as far as your budget overall and tax receipts coming in. I realize that could be a problem. I, I keep my fingers crossed, I think the city of Bellevue's doing okay, but I know some of these places are not getting the taxes that they are, or they're afraid they're not gonna get them. So, it has put some places in a crunch. There really isn't anything new. All of us have been doing books on the bench. We did, for a while, open the library up for appointment. And then the, things got worse, and our mayor said, no, we're lacking up building again. And so, everything, people call us and everything has to be put on the bench, for the children or the adults. We also are doing crafts on the bench, so every week, there's a new craft for the children. And that's going like damn busters, it's really hard to keep up with that. So, we usually have a mound on our bench up front with people's names on the bags. And I think people are thinking, you know, this is an easier way to do this. Can we keep doing this forever? Because sometimes they just call and say, oh, get me something good, or just make sure I haven't read it before. And get ten books for this child, and ten books for that child, and ten books, and you're like, oh, I want them to come back in. But anyways, it's very, very, very busy. I swear, the phone rings every five or ten minutes. But that's good, that's good. We want people to think, no matter what's going on, they need their books and they need their magazines.
Those individuals have to fill their time, too.
Yeah, that's true, that's true, yeah.
Lots of us, lots of more, lots of more free time than we did before.
This is very, very true, yeah.
You gotta keep this, so you're not, you and your wife or your, your spouse aren't at each other's throats.
Yeah.
This is really going on so much longer than we all thought. So, unless you have questions.
I guess the question I have is, so what was the balance at the end of your fiscal year? As court, with all this going on, was there less, I should say, employment or less expenses?
At the very beginning, I worked the library by myself, because the mayor didn't want anybody in the building, so he let me stay. So I could, that's when we started the books on the bench, that was in the middle of March. Then, the mayor relaxed the rules and said, okay, because we were so busy, the others could come in. We are a little under budget what we normally would spend, because I'm not buying as many books, because people aren't coming in and saying, I want this and this and this. Sometimes they're calling and doing that. But yes, the, the, on the salary line, we will be a bit less. But the city council is very determined not to fire anybody or lay anybody off. They don't want to lose good people. And so, that's why they're willing, even though maybe we're not as busy. And that would only be because we're not doing children's programs. We're not having any group activities, obviously. So for that reason, we're not as, not as busy. But, well, I'll tell you, we're just about as busy in every other way.
So you still have your staff intact?
Yes, and that's because the city council wanted to keep everybody and not let anybody go, which I really, really appreciate. And also, the money was budgeted, so it's not like they're drawing it from someplace new, it's budgeted.
I, I just think, you know, I know the books on the bench, I think that crafts on the bench just sounds dynamite.
It is, it's crazy.
Oh.
It's just crazy.
Wish you would have brought a bag.
So we could play, too.
So we can save, you can make a turkey. Yeah, yeah. I, I think that's wonderful.
The kids are, the kids we never had involved before are involved, so that's exciting. And that's the whole thing.
And it gives them something to look forward to, too.
Yeah, it does. And that's just part of, part of our, our job and our goal is to keep people excited about reading, to keep people engaged, and particularly with children. And we get a lot of reference calls, and like, okay, I, I have a computer, but it's new to me, I'm trying to get a job. And then we can walk people through, we've done a lot of that, walking through the process. I think you just have to do whatever you can to serve the community.
Oh, absolutely.
And any extra thing they ask us to do, we try to do. Sometimes we roll our eyes, but we do it. So, yeah, it's a fun, libraries are a fun place to work.
Once in a while, we, we roll our eyes, too. Especially Luann.
Yeah, I bet, I bet. Yeah, she's a troublemaker. I've heard that before.
I just think she's a trouble solver.
I bet for you guys, yeah. Just like everywhere else, and try to determine when that will be. I hope it's before the start of the next fiscal year, that we.
We all do.
We all get vaccinated. You know, I'm concerned some people don't want to be vaccinated, but it's just every day is a new experience. We just haven't waded through this before, so that's what we're trying to do, just best for him.
You know, I, I shared this with some of them, but back in two thousand and three, there was, there was an editorial.
You don't have to give it up.
There was an editorial in the Telegraph Herald that talked about a future pandemic that was going to be coming to the United States and the world. And it was quite a lengthy article, and it had pictures of what the virus would look like, and it was exactly the same. And in fact, I, I had Luann send it to one of the John Cruz from the Telegraph Herald, and I said, you know, this was in the Telegraph Herald in two thousand and three, and it's exactly what we're living right now, because it said it would be a worldwide pandemic. And I, I just was, and I looked at the pictures, Marilyn saves everything, and she was sorting through things, and she found this newspaper article, and she showed it to me, and I said, it is exactly what we're going through now.
It's scary.
And somebody pulled up a comic book, I think from the fifties, and it was going into the future by the time, which is about now, and everybody had this little dome thing that followed, they lived in as they walked through. It had people in their business suits and stuff, this dome, as they walked, the whole city was like that, and they're like, oh, that's real scary.
Yeah. But that, you know, it's just amazing, because, and of course, when I talked to him about it, he said, well, I just cover county and city. county and city and school boards. He says, I don't do those kind of editorials. But I thought, you know, it would be really interesting to compare then to now and say, you know, we, I, we are living it.
They should rerun that.
I, I think they should.
In their morgue.
Yeah. To think that long ago.
Might be a little scary about the guy that wrote it. Where he, what, what's he doing?
I said, I might go looking for the guy that wrote it.
His name's on it.
So in about twenty years, they're gonna invent time travel and this guy came from that time back to.
Back to the future now, we don't watch that movie. Remember, that was in there too.
Yeah.
Wow, interesting.
Well, we know, we know it's trying, but we know that you bring joy to a lot of people.
We certainly appreciate all the work that you do, Marion, and it, now and in the past, of course, and hopefully in the future, so.
I've been here thirty-six years.
It's always nice to see you.
I started when I was twelve. Thanks so much.
We will consider everything, of course, and, and, uh, we'll let you know.
Okay, I know you always do the best you can.
Well, we just had a nice, we had a nice report from our interim engineer last week that says we're gonna be second day roads are gonna be a hundred thousand dollars short under what we're getting from the Fed, so.
Which actually is good news because Road Use Tax Fund, with less people driving and stuff, he said it was gonna really drop. And it's only dropped three and a half percent, which is okay compared to where they thought it was gonna drop ten or twelve percent. But there's an increase in delivery trucks that start running, so that's kind of making a, helping the difference on that. It hurts some, but it could have been worse. But we still don't know where we're at across the board yet.
Yeah. Well, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Marion.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. We've done with other boards and commissions and unfinished business. What time is?
We're with the sprinkler system. I know we got that information and.
We authorized them to go up and do the testing, but I.
Yeah, um, Matt had sent me an email that everything's on schedule.
Okay.
So we appreciated everything, uh, that's on schedule, the repairs that were, uh, supposed to be done or in, in process are done. And no, he's, he's real happy, so. Good. Yep, we're, we're on, on, onboard to keep that working well. I guess the other, the other question we had, I don't know if we ever tested the outside fire hydrant. I think we should ask about that sometime. To where the fire department hooks to the building itself, so.
I don't think they test that at the time they tested.
No, I don't think they did.
You know, we had a conversation with Marty about that. So that, all the budget sessions we had scheduled, which we wanted to have a general discussion with the budget, so. Then with that portion.
Okay, so do we have to wait till ten forty-five? Is that the case for closed session? Well, if that's. Is that?
So I think you can call Becky down.
Okay.
You want to just recess and when she.
We will take a recess, a short recess at this time.
Okay, you want to close it, just recess to go back into open session?
I will. Reconvene.
Back into open session and then we'll vote to go in.
We will reconvene at this time, our meeting. And we are joined, uh, by Becky Chapin, our Human Resource Administrator.
Morning again.
Good morning.
Um, so we are here to discuss a personnel evaluation on which the employee has requested a session.
So moved.
Second motion and a second to go into closed session for an employee evaluation. So I would ask anyone that's not personally involved with the closed session to remove themselves from the room.
And now I'm going to pause our meeting. Are we ready? Yeah. Okay.
All right, good morning, still morning. And we are out of closed session at this time. We're back in open session for regular meeting. And we had a closed session meeting, and so on our agenda is discussion and probably action.
I would move that we table action on the, um, closed session, um, evaluate human services evaluation until our next meeting.
One second. I have a motion and a second to table any action on the closed session of employee evaluation. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose nay. Motion carried. Is there any other business before the board this morning? We went through unfinished business. Any new business?
I would second that.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, oppose nay. Motion carried, meeting adjourned.